...off by a 100.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman Lightborn is joining us via online. So he asked me if I would take over and run the meeting. So we'll start off with the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Moved and approved.
Second.
Moved and approved or seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries. We have a hearing on appraisal at 5:45. We'll continue on with Kevin Fieldson's report.
They did finish putting that base line on the truck route now, so that's pretty much done. Looks really good. It's really hard again, so I don't know if anybody got a chance to drive over it. I was over it Sunday. It was in really nice condition. They did a good job with it.
What day did it get done?
What day was it they got done? They put some more baseline into those soft spots. When?
Yeah.
Wednesday. Oh, maybe Thursday. They finished their jobs.
I was over it, but it was getting dark. I didn't want to be satisfied.
What day was that?
I think last Wednesday.
It was real rough and pot, yeah, and they got those back out of there. I noticed that too. I noticed that too.
You think it's ready for pavement? If we decided to do that?
If we decided to pave it, we're supposed to put another, lift the gravel on.
Yeah, that's right. But the base, you think's all right?
Yeah, I do. It's really hard since we got seconded out. There's about two places where there's a little whoop, whooping, but otherwise it's pretty good. It's good mark. Eventually, we'll get those little, it's like a wheel depression or something, but it's only like three feet long or something like that.
We think their shoulders are up where they are supposed to be?
Yeah, pretty much. They're wider than they used to be, so I mean, if anything, not better for them than us. Shoved wider shoulders.
Yeah. They're widened out.
Yeah, they did. About five feet on each side.
Ready?
Yeah. Started out at 26 feet, now it's up to about 32.
Which way?
Yeah, well, total. But what we do, if we decide to ask all, we got to bring it up under the fire of some sections, wider shoulder would have to.
Adam, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Were you on it?
I haven't driven it yet since they've finished up. No, I haven't.
I was on it Sunday, and it was in good shape. I was kind of late for coaching and was speeding. I shouldn't probably admit that, but well, I was going the speed limit, let's put it that way. And I didn't have any issues or oddities that I noticed. And it went back the same way, so I thought it was in good shape. A lot better than it was.
Now, Wednesday had had a lot of, like you were right, a roller coaster or something. You had a couple of these, but a lot of them go this way. And they got those out.
It was dark out, but I couldn't see if they had that pit closed up. It is closed up.
Yeah, they worked, they dissed the ground and everything. Got the black dirt, black place.
I thought I could see that, black dirt. Okay, I don't know.
Everybody else say, were you on it?
Side by side, not really very compared. But it was definitely better than it was a week, 10 days ago. Absolutely.
All right, moving on. We got invoice from the spot gravel we did on Sopers on Ramsey 980. We got about 200 yards of gravel from them, and that cost $3,550. Just like a motion paid up.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to pay the invoice from Sopers for the gravel. 5:50. Roll call, please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lightpon?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Okay, then close, stood hall, 750 yards of gravel. Went to our stockpile at the yard at the shop. I had invoice of $7,312.57.
Moved and approved. Second. Moved and approved the invoice for calls for the gravel. Roll call, please.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightpon?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Roger, I'm closed. Kevin? One of his vendors out of my yard the other day, and they told me that they took some gravel into the county shopyard, and that's got that high clay in it. Really gets hard.
What?
Really gets hard.
Really gets hard. Action hard.
Have we used all that?
Nope, we still have all, just, we put it in those soft spots on the floor.
You did?
Yeah, we did.
Help?
Uh, I have melter since it snowed, but I mean, the day we did it, it firmed up real nice.
It did?
Yeah. So this is what we got to motion, moisture, I have melter. And normally with that high clay content, the moisture, not good. Most of the, I mean, I'm just having people later back and forth if it gets off.
What about seven? What do we do with that? Does that mean some of that?
No, it's not near as bad as four was. We had some washboards and loose gravel, but those soft spots are pretty much filled up on that one.
They are.
Yeah. Yeah, the ones on the floor were really noticeable. You could miss them. I don't know how to get around the type of thing.
They're pretty good now.
I have an ice cream, their size is small. This week, I don't have this. We did it last Thursday.
I didn't do it either. Okay, that's all I got.
We had a change order for Ramsey County 2 and Elks Drive. There's no cost or time extension associated with a change order, but the change order was to make sure there was no technology, no communication devices, no computers on the equipment they were using manufactured by certain companies. And there wasn't, so we were fine there. But we had to do all the paperwork to sign a change order. So I guess I need a motion for me to sign the change orders. That probably. I've never seen one of these before, but must be some company out there manufacturing computer equipment. What was it, Huawei?
No.
No, it would have been like on their Huawei.
No. Huawei. I mean, the United States has basically banned Huawei because it's basically a front for the Chinese government. That would be the only company I could even think of that.
Oh, that's what it was, that type of tapping into our knowledge type of.
Moved and approved. Second. Been moved and seconded to allow Mr. Fieldson to be responsible for the change order and take care of signing that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries.
One more thing I have. Low pass, when we talked about that last meeting, we talked about the winter time permits where they would issue for 30 days at a rate of 50, 100 or 150 dollars. And we opted to go with the whole season for 50 dollars. And they can't do that on their software programs. So we have two options. We'd be completely opt out of that on a low pass program and just sell ourselves, or we could go with their rate of 30 dollars or 50 dollars for a 30-day period. 60 dollars or 60-day period is a hundred dollars, and 90-day period is a hundred and 50 dollars. We better just do theirs. Then we need to have a motion for that to even look to change our own motion. So.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we amend our motion for the low pass agreement.
Right.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, unfinished business. COVID-19 discussion. Adam, did you have anything that you wanted to share or bring up?
I guess the only things I would bring up, I was in, on a meeting this morning through Microsoft Teams with the governor and lieutenant governor, their staffs, and then 14, the mayors of the 14 largest cities, plus the county commission chairs of the 14 large, where those cities lie in, talking about, you know, how things are going, concerns, questions. A lot of discussion there. Mayor Johnson from Devils Lake was on as well, and I thought it was good discussion. Obviously, there's a lot of things going on right now. Huge numbers these last few days. Fargo and Minot last night, both went to mask mandates. Neither of them have any enforcement portion of the policy. They're just trying to reiterate that they feel it's important essentially. West Fargo, they said something about they're going to have a discussion about it at a meeting tomorrow. So just so you know what's going on in the state more than anything. From the local front, we have a meeting coming up on Friday, 2:00 p.m., and it's going to be myself, the mayor, and then representatives from, I believe, the school board, maybe the superintendent of schools, Lake Region State College representatives, and other people from the community that are business leaders and things of that nature, to discuss how essentially we can try to avoid Ramsey County and our community here in Devils Lake, as well as, you know, our surrounding communities from moving from that yellow level we're at currently up to the orange or the red. You know, let's try to nip it in the bud as best we can. You know, just, there's a lot of concern out at the, the colleges, the ones that got this together. There's a lot of concern from their perspective that we don't, we try to stop it before it escalates more than it has already in our community. And, you know, obviously, our numbers are going up percentage-wise. We haven't been tracking as bad, I don't believe, as some of the larger communities. And our sheer numbers, obviously, are less just because we have less people, but it's still a concern. So I guess we'll see what comes out of that meeting. I would assume we'll just remind people, one of the things that'll be discussed is reminding people, obviously, you know, stay in touch with your hand, you know, wear masks, all of those things that we've been harping on for seven months. And we're going to have to try to get ahead of this because it's starting to get away from us, I think, unfortunately. So I guess I'll bring back to the commission whatever comes of that meeting, and I'm sure it'll be in the news when it's done if there's anything that comes from it. So other than that, the only other thing I would say is I did have a discussion with Candy this morning just in visiting with her about things that we have coming up in the memorial building. And she's on board just in saying we're going to have to stay on, you know, keep the people that have it rented. And I believe there's just one event coming up right now other than, obviously, the election. So just kind of keep the people that have it rented for that one date in the loop, simply because if we do move from a yellow to an orange, or if we were lucky, we moved to the other way, back to a green, that would change the percentages and how many people we could have in the memorial building. So we're going to have to kind of keep an eye on that and how we're going to want to, you know, handle the memorial building going forward. But just something to keep in the back of your mind. You don't have to make any decisions today or anything. Other than that, that's about all I have to say on COVID, I think. There's, operations in the courthouse are still operating. We've had some people that have had to quarantine, so it's just kind of continue to go on. And I guess at this point, I'm glad we decided to go back to by appointment only because the numbers just keep tracking up. So hopefully, we can turn this the other way.
Thank you, Adam. And I do think that.
Yeah, thank you.
The college's community conversation is how it's, how it reads. So I think that would be open to anybody that would want to attend, whether the commission, 2:00 at the auditorium, where it's virtually on Microsoft Teams. With that, I think it's hearing time. So do we need to adjourn this meeting and go into the hearing, or? No? No? Okay. We'll just have the hearing on the appraisal of the property, foreclosed property that's included in the packets. So nobody's here. We just need to go ahead and approve this, that these properties will be up for auction on the 6th of November, correct?
November 7th, third Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Third Tuesday in November. Gotcha.
I have to have it published by the.
Published by the 6th. Gotcha. Perfect.
I'll move to approve.
They moved it seconded that we have a, approve the appraised list for delinquent forfeited property. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Vote, same sign. Motion carries.
Just so you know, when we started out with this list, we had 130-plus properties, and we got it down to four.
That's fantastic. So thank you, Candy and staff. So great job. Continuing on with unfinished business, property nuisance issue, nuisance property issue. And Carrie, you have a.
So the only update I have for the enforcement of the city ordinances regarding nuisance, the attorney is still looking into it. I didn't speak with him or hear back yesterday that he's still looking into it on the nuisance aspect. I know the sheriff's office has been involved in looking out there. Didn't report anything alarming in public health. I think he's also working on their end, whether or not he'll do anything beyond getting it reported.
Anybody have anything else that we'd like to discuss on that? Adam, did you have anything that you'd like to mention on the nuisance property issue?
Nope, not at this point.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Going down to new business, approve city of Devils Lake bill for the West End levy. I think that's $19,135.99. That's billed quarterly. Need a motion to approve that? Couple of years ago, I wasn't there an idea that this was going to run away. And yeah, I thought Hovind's office had a press release about that during budget discussions. I contacted Hovind's office, and they said they'd look into it. And never did hear back from him. So I'm not sure if it got hidden amongst the panels of Congress, or, but yeah, that would be certainly nice if the court would take that over and 20,000 every quarter. Colony mill every year. Those are city share? Colony share is 30 percent, sorry, percent.
Is that a budget made or action or water vision?
That's a, it's a federal, you know, Corps of Engineers. They would have to come through some sort of federal.
I think Kramer's the one that gave the hold of it. Because the, I remember, right, it was high camp that was telling everybody that this was going to get taken care of by the feds.
Right.
But you got beat. I don't know. The ID unit off the door, huh?
Hope not, but.
I hope we should probably get a hold of Kramer.
We can look into it. In the meantime, I'll move to approve. Move to approve the bill for the West End Dyke. Devils Lake, we have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Reluctantly.
If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries. Site authorization approval.
Moved and approved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Vote, same sign.
Jeff?
Yeah?
Well, I apologize. I thought you were finished.
Just about.
I was just going to ask one question.
Yeah?
On the Dyke payment, are we actually cutting that check? Or are we just approving it? Because should we roll call that just to make sure we're right?
We're going to pay it, so yeah.
So we should do.
Right, Adam.
Roll call, we are paying it. Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had our minutes correct.
Okay, we'll go back. Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightpon?
Aye.
And Britt.
Aye. How much you carries? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Sheriff Nelson?
I almost shouldn't take that. With the adding, we might need to start moving ahead to equipment orders. So I finally got my bid yesterday from Ford, which I didn't have time to get to buy. But I got a Dodge one for, Dodge was 3,000, 30,400 for a Durangle. Ford was 34,000 something for their pickup. And the Dodge pickup was 30,900, I think. So it's Dodge product, whatever we call it. But I need approval, I guess. I want to go ahead and get them ordered, so we can get them here. Hopefully, get, and along those lines, because I need to start ordering them to happen here. I have two new deputies start January. I can't have none. I have a car. That's kind of a push this year, which has never been before.
I thought the two new deputies, you have vehicles for them?
No.
No.
I'm replacing, I'm using the two new ones for them.
Oh.
I'm not replacing two this year.
Yeah.
But I have to have two.
Okay, gotcha.
So I think, I'm sorry if that was a misunderstanding. We could get by, but I mean, oh, the first whole month is going to be OJT anyway, so. But normally, we don't order until December. They don't get here until May. So I want to get it done a little sooner.
You need their available?
What?
Vehicles?
Yeah. I talked to them. They said they should be here sometime in December, hopefully.
But is that in 2021 budget?
I talked to them about that, and they agreed that they could pick it all up early since until January. Because I was concerned about that as well. But along with that, I got to order radios. I just got the bid for that before it came here, which is, it's well over $2,000. But I've got to get stuff ordered because they're saying the order time is eight to 12 weeks, which puts us already into the end of December, if everything goes right. So you kind of see where I'm, and I got to schedule, get it installed, get a cage to order. I'd just like to be able to go ahead and start ordering the stuff I need.
Moved and approved. Second.
Is that a motion for all of it? Everything?
They're not paying for anything. We're just getting it ready.
No, I understand that. Just asking, is it a one motion for radios?
I say, some of this stuff is going to be more than $2,000. I just want to come back every time.
No, I know. I just want to know what we're doing.
Like a light part is just about $2,000.
So.
Just a light part for a car, yeah. So that'd be another time of trip if you want to get it from lower.
You can get them. They're very easy to get all of?
Well, yeah, we can order them, but everything should be here in time, is what they're saying. But there might be a hiccup here and there with all the transportation problems. And that's why they're saying eight to 12 weeks, which would put us right at the end of December, which is right along with, you know, when I got to start ordering.
We don't have to pay for this until after.
No, and I've made that perfectly clear with all the members that this wouldn't be available until April, until January. And they so far agree.
They also have to get a cage and have that installed.
I have to order it. But I have to, I have to know what vehicles I can order before I can order the cage, because they're vehicles specific. So kind of, that's why the hurry tonight, we just started to get the okay, so I can get them.
Well, that brings me up to a kind of a parliamentarian issue is it's not on our agenda. And so can, is this something that we, can we vote on?
We're not spending any money.
Well, I realize that, but. We can, we.
Go back to the previous.
Previous minutes and.
No, go back to the previous motion for the agenda.
Oh.
You can add him to the agenda.
Okay. I think I would feel more comfortable if we did it that way.
That's fine. I just didn't want to wait two more weeks, though.
I completely understand that, but we should, we should go ahead and add you to the agenda. And if that would be okay with the.
I'll make a motion to add Steve to the agenda.
Okay.
Eddie seconded it, he's still.
Yeah.
No, we'll talk.
Well.
But this all came only yesterday. I already got that second bid in if I didn't deal before I could even answer this.
Adam, you comfortable with that?
I believe if I'm understanding correctly, we're just basically making a friendly amendment to change the agenda, to add the sheriff, so that we can, we can, we can vote on this thing, correct?
Correct, so we can have this discussion and probably vote.
Okay. So what's on the table right now is we're voting to amend the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. I am fine with it.
All right. All in favor of amending the agenda to add Sheriff Nelson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Motion carries. So now we can go ahead and approve the motion for Commissioner Brown have with the approval for the Sheriff Nelson to go ahead with his bids or his purchases. That's what it was, right? Yeah, purchases.
Ordered.
Ordered, yeah.
Choose, choose what you want. Choose, choose what you want.
Well, the guys all wanted Durangles. And, and basically, when I'm looking at these bids, it's what's gonna be the best value for the county? And what's the best use wise, whether it be the, you know, if the pickup was three thousand dollars lower, we'd be buying the pickup just because it's lower in price. But they're, they're so close, I mean, they're four hundred dollars apart in the two. I don't know why, but.
And Commissioner Nelson, you're still second to our motion?
And I apologize for that.
Oh, that's?
You're welcome.
Just get the camera to the big door. So, we have a motion and a second in front of us to, uh, allow Sheriff Nelson to go ahead with the orders for the new equipment. Uh, any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the bid of the order? Any visitors on, uh, lineski? No? Mr. Lightpon, do you have anything else?
Uh, the only thing I would, uh, mention is I, I went to the, uh, that A N S meeting last week and, and sat through that. Um, uh, we also, um, uh, Representative Westland as well as Senator Elke were there as well. Um, it, it's, it looks like the more feedback they're, anyway, but it's fleshed out very well. Um, so, we essentially, uh, in Nelson County and Benson County, didn't have anybody there. And if this is supposed to be a deal where we're all in it together, well, then they need to have representation at the table too. Uh, so, uh, uh, Mr. Brechner, Brechner, I can never remember how you say his name, so I apologize, uh, was going to go ahead and continue to work with them. And I said, it's not that we're not interested, we think this might be a good idea, but we need far more answers than we have now. And they're gonna need some long-term funding, not just to put the stations in place, but to help offset the costs of maintenance and everything else that goes with it. On top of the fact that who's going to, I mean, th- they wanna go with the low pressure stations, it sounds like, so they won't have to man them, so you won't have a labor issue probably. But you're still gonna have ongoing costs plus on top of the fact of, I mean, there's still boats gonna be going in the lake even after snow. So, how are we going to handle it in the fall and in the early spring? There's a lot of unanswered questions, but I, I think it's still something we can, we can stay in communication about. Um, but at this point, there's nothing really to report other than there's still need to come up with a plan that's more, more thoroughly vetted, let's put it that way.
Adam, did our legislators understand that, that's what we're reluctant about is the money?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I reiterated that at the meeting. I said, the problem we're gonna run into is, is, you know, I, I, I said, none of us on the commission, I think, are against not trying to protect the lake from getting nuisance species in it. Of course, we're all in favor of that, we know that it's an economic driver for the community. But we can't possibly sign up to support something when we don't know how much it's gonna cost. We don't know how much game and fish is going to continue to help support the program other than to put the station in, in wherever they're gonna put the stations. We don't know how many stations on, to put down. Uh, you know, and then without a ongoing appropriation through whether it's game or fish running the appropriation or them running it through locals, uh, you know, you know, subdivisions like the county or, or maybe through something like, uh, uh, Lake Access or, uh, Lake Region Anglers or something like that. You know, we just, we can't possibly sign up for it not knowing what it's gonna cost us. So, you know, and, and they, they need an ongoing appropriation is what it comes down to. And it's gonna be difficult for them to get it. The one thing that I think they probably will try to do is, and I think it's a reasonable thing, is go to places like, uh, the state parks where they have really busy boat ramps and they'll put them in there at least, and that'll be a good start. But, uh, they're gonna try to come up with some more answers and then they'll get back to us. But yeah, I think, I think the, the legislators were pretty aware that we just wanted to know what we were signing up for, what the cost is gonna be. Because putting it all on the back of property taxes probably doesn't make a lot of sense.
Uh, Adam, did I, did I hear a mention of local skin in the game? So, they do want some sort of local buy-in, whether it be a, a county or some other political subdivision?
Yeah, I, I think, I think they want local buy-in. I don't know if they necessarily mean by buy-in, all of it has to be money. It, it has to be also that, you know, essentially, somebody's going to have to look after these stations. You know, I mean, cause if, if they're, even if they're unmanned, you still have to have somebody go check them, make sure the water's okay, make sure the maintenance is done. So, there's gotta be somebody local that's going to essentially corral that and, and make sure it works. Because game and fish apparently doesn't have the, the manpower to do it. Well, I don't think that's necessarily something we can't handle through somebody like, uh, like Lake Access or something to make it function. Uh, but until we know how many we're talking about and the ongoing costs and they flesh that out, I, I just don't know how we're gonna be able to, to sign up for it other than to say we're still interested, but you gotta get us some, some tighter numbers.
Exactly right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
One more question, Adam, did you feel the legislators are probably gonna bring it up during the session? To try to get something through the session to, uh, finances or, or get a better handle on it?
I, I, I honestly couldn't tell you either way. It sounded to me like they thought trying to get anything with new money appropriated through the session was gonna be awful difficult. Um, but they did realize that it, it is not necessarily a, a bad idea. But I, I, I couldn't tell you either which way if they felt that they would be able to, to bring it up in a separate bill or something like that. But, you know, there were some things brought up, like, you know, we could reallocate things like, and, and they are things that make some sense. For instance, uh, gas tax that's collected when people fill boats goes to the road fund. It, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but it does, that's just how it functions. Maybe they could reappropriate some of those over and use it for things like A N S. But I, I believe Senator Elke said something to the, you know how long that's been like that? How hard that'll be to change essentially? So, a, a single appropriation through a single bill is probably the way they would have to do it. I, I don't know if, if they have any interest in doing so or not. I, I think they believe that the issue is important. I don't know how much they think you're going to be able to get money behind it, let's put it that way.
Hey, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other announcements?
I do, I do think years ago, state parks took out, based upon snowmobile registration, so many gallons of gasoline for a snowmobile, registered the state of North Dakota, I don't know if they still do that, but that would be an idea they could do with their votes. How many registered votes are in North Dakota, based fifty gallons a year or whatever?
They, they do have that, they got that, uh, A N S sticker passed last legislative session to put some funding in towards this A N S prevention. And I think that's where the cost of these wash stations will initially be coming from. But like Adam said, Ned, you're, you're right too, is the ongoing maintenance and, and cost of them is the great unknown. Uh, so they have a few dollars dedicated to it, but not enough.
Not anywhere near.
Not anywhere near, close enough to maintain the monitoring.
Gotta get them other two counties in also.
Yeah.
I mean, they're benefiting from it.
A lot of, like, sure on both of them.
I have no other announcements, Adam, uh, anything else?
Next meeting's on Thursday?
Nope.
Yep, next meeting is November fifth, on a Thursday.
On fifth, yeah. Yeah, sorry. My calendar's off a little bit because of Thursday.
Unless you can clone me to?
I don't know, whatever.
I need to, I'm right now.
Anybody else? All right, with that, uh, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody for coming, see everybody on the fifth of November.
Thank you.